In school board meeting, I'd like to call the meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll continue by reading our mission statement. The Newmarket School District is committed to the highest standards of quality education. We ensure a safe and successful learning community. We embrace diversity and respond to the social, emotional, intellectual, intellectual, and physical needs of every child. We strive to work with a broader community to ensure that students develop lifelong skills, enabling them to be contributing and productive members of society. Okay. First item on our agenda this evening is recognitions, and I think it's quite appropriate that we recognize a couple of longstanding members of the school board, as well as having served in other roles in the community, planning board. I'm not going to try to make a list because it goes on and on and on. But it's kind of end of an era for the school board. You both have been part of it and contributing in many ways, and not just doing the minimum, but above and beyond the call of duty, and certainly have been role models for me, and I really appreciate all you've done for the board, for the town of Newmarket, and the kids, because as the mission statement says, it's all about the kids and the community. So, anyway, I would invite others to chime in. We'll do the typical, as Dr. Hayes mentioned just before the meeting began, we'll do the typical off-camera reception, if you will, after...
Do you have, like, food and drinks?
No, but I could use some food and drinks. So, anyone care to chime in?
I would. I just would like to thank, you know, Linda, you got me on here, and you've just been a fearless leader, and your guidance and questions, you've always been available to answer questions, and I just really appreciate, you know, everything you've done for the board and for me, and I'll still see you around, though. And Chet, I just, you've been a great, what should I say? You've kept me honest in a lot of the things that I've, decisions I've made, and, you know, we haven't always agreed, but you've always been very respectful, and I appreciate that, and that speaks to your character as a person, and I just want to thank you for your service to us and the town.
And I'd like to say, I think it's been an honor to serve with both of you. You've taught me a lot to be a better board member, I hope, and I think it's going to be very difficult to replace both of you. Nobody's sitting in this chair. But I do want to say that, like, when I think of Chet, I always think of him bringing student achievement to a higher level, like, your curriculum knowledge and your expectations for student performance, whether it's in our building or SST, has been a fantastic contribution for our kids. And Linda, who always is like a ray of sunshine, even in the worst meeting where we're all stuck on the most difficult decision, like making personnel cuts, she's always a true optimist and always brings kind of a, she's a problem solver. There's always a way out of a difficult situation, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I'll reserve mine for making the presentation, and then we can do that, and then hopefully we can hear from the two of you. We'll see.
Should we follow you? Oh, just wait.
Let me take, yeah, come on down, and Linda, why don't you come down first? I just want to express my appreciation, because this is, clearly, it's been the best board I've ever worked with. I think we get a variety of opinions on things, but it's always civil. People are really always focused on the right thing, which are kids, and doing the best thing for education here in Newmarket. I especially appreciate the stamina that you showed as we went through trying to negotiate two different contracts, and all that you contributed to get us to where hopefully we get a new contract. So, it's my pleasure to present to you this gift, which I hope you find terrific and be a great remembrance of the years you've spent committed to this board and to the people and children of Newmarket. So, thank you very much.
You know I'm a crier. But I'm going to try. I'm trying to pull through. I just want to say that it's been such an honor and privilege to serve this community that I love so much. Even though I've only lived here for 23 years, so I'm a newbie, you know, it's my home. And, sorry. And I love the children of this community, and you've all taught me so much. Chet, you especially, you're just, you're so knowledgeable, and I've just really enjoyed my time with all of you, and I just want to thank you all so much.
Chet, why don't you come up and join? Stand over here. Cliff, that's another board member that I am going to miss. From the beginning, a friend and an ally, and sometimes an opponent, but always for the right reasons, and I appreciate that so much, the opinion and diversity that you brought to this board, and again, always the focus on the right thing, which are what's in the best interest of kids. I am especially appreciative of what you contributed as we went through trying to negotiate a contract, as what you contributed all the way through the facilities committee process. You were always there, always dependable, and sorely going to be missed as much as Linda. And so, we wish you the best. Again, hopefully a terrific gift, that hopefully will be a great memory for you for the time you were part of this team.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank the people of Newmarket for giving me the opportunity to serve on this board, and also the board itself and my family for putting up with all these years that I've been home. And if there's any other way I can help, I may try. Thank you.
And now, as our customer, we'll recess for five minutes, so we can personally, again, congratulate them on this evening and this honor, and also maybe get to meet their family, too. Five-minute recess.
All right. Hopefully, we're all set downstairs, so at this point, we'll continue with our meeting. And this would be the spot in the agenda for visitors to make comments if they so chose. Not seeing a rush for the microphones, so we'll continue with minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of February 21st.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Aye. Okay.
I'd like to question one thing. Jim, in your report, you said that with Governor Hanson's release of the final budget, that the first, the building aid, the first year that she's going to be in office, is not going to have any aid at all. Does that mean that we're just going to be paying for old aid?
Where are you? You're on page two.
I'm on page two, yes.
And what, the second paragraph under superintendent's report?
That talks about Governor Hanson.
Release of final budget's balanced, assumes no more than 2% revenue growth, fully funds adequacy aid.
But then there's a sentence that says, unfortunately, her building aid...
Budget fund. Her building aid budget...
I had actually...
Only funds, it should be, reverse those two words, fund and only. Only funds, and you say old, I would say current school building debt in the first year, and provides only about $5 million for new projects in the second year.
So, there's not going to be any increase at all in the first year?
They, the legislature capped it at $50 million, and so, for, in their budgeting for the 2013-14, so that $50 million covers the current debt in that year, and then the second year, which is really when aid starts getting handed out, some of that debt goes away, and that's what frees up $5 million. But in some total, there's, we're not looking at a lot of money. Not a lot, it's too big. Still, it's capped at $50 million, and there was no, so there's no change in the governor's proposal, at least, in that.
Thank you.
I had one just at the top of that page, under the first paragraph. It says, Emma Valinsky said that, that, there's an extra "that" in there, so just get rid of the "that." And I think that's it.
Am I saying that's that?
That's that.
Sorry. I'll try not to make it one of those nights. Although, it's a send-off. Okay, those were rather friendly changes. Hearing no others, all those in favor of the motion? Say so, yeah. Clearly, I'm born out of the chair. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed?
I will abstain because I wasn't here.
Thank you. And we did have a non-public meeting that evening.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of February 21st, meeting non-public.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion again carries four, four and one abstention. Okay. Onto reports. Emma, what do you have for us this evening?
Tomorrow is the junior high dance from 7:00 to 9:00, and it's $5 to get in. Winter sports award night is on Monday at 6:30 in the CAF. Mr. Newmarket is a maybe on Thursday, March 14th. We're really hoping some more boys will sign up. We only have one certain right now.
How do you have a contest with one person?
I know, we need aid, so let's all sign up.
Okay.
And there's no school Friday the 15th because of the teacher workshop. March 16th is Project Graduation Bingo, as well as a penny sale at 4:00, supporting the eighth grade field trip to DC. Counterclockwise is on sale for $3 at the school, and you can get them with Ms. Blake or anyone else in counterclockwise. And all spring sports start March 18th.
One to the next.
Talking about spring.
Emma, what is the requirement from Mr. Newmarket? Is it open to students only?
Yes.
Chetos.
Could be your final send-off.
I think you'd do well in the swimsuit.
I guess I started things, didn't I?
Yes.
My last minute.
Go over the bank.
Any questions for Emma, or?
The only other thing I wanted to add was that I know today, for the penny sale, Beth and Jim Rowe donated two tickets to an Angels game, and two tickets to, who's the other team that, you know, one of the teams that they don't play that often, one of the...
Kansas City?
No.
One of the interleague play games?
Another interleague.
Atlanta?
No. Darn it. Can't remember.
San Francisco?
But two really good games, two really, really good games in June, so they'll be raffling those off at the penny sale, so it's added incentive to go.
Good reason to go. Thanks to them, and...
Yeah.
That's wonderful generosity. Any other questions for Emma? All right. Let's move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Hayes, do you have things you'd like to highlight?
Everything in the superintendent's report really reflects on things to come in the agenda, so if you will, I'll slide right over that and move right into the facilities piece, because there's a couple of things there I want to comment on. First, in terms of the fire and life safety, in your notes I gave you, it says February 6th, it's not, it's February 26th. I met with Dan Bisson, and he gave me an update on where we are with designing the science egress and what's transpired there. You may recall, on the second floor, there was a portion of the life science lab that was going to be taken away, and a hallway was going to be created up there. And one of the issues that Dan had mentioned up there was an air handling unit that was in the ceiling, that was very old, was probably going to have to be replaced and put on the roof. He, Dan brought in his mechanical engineers to take a look at that, and it triggered them to look at other air handling units that were in that vicinity of the building, and many of them up on the roof. And what they discovered was that when the air handling units were installed, they weren't, they weren't all installed at the same time. It appeared as though they came at different times, and so when new pieces were added, it wasn't in a way that tied in to make one efficient system, it was just a piece was added, it solved a problem. And so, what that led to were inefficiencies in the equipment that we have already in hand up there, to the point where we can do away with that old air handling unit that's in our way and not have to replace it, as long as we then spend money to re-systematize, if you will, systematize, all the air handling units that we have in place, so that we're getting the maximum efficiency out of them, because some are overloaded, one big one is only producing at one-third. So, what they're going to do is redesign the use of those air handling units, and in the end, we'll have a much more efficient air handling system, which helps us with ventilation, helps us with heat. In the end, the expenditure that we would have done for buying a new air handling unit is now money that's going to be used to redo this engineering work, but it just makes a lot of sense. It wasn't going to cost us any more or any less, so I told them to go ahead and do that. So, I thought you should know about that change. We are still working on the spaces in the building that we knew had been without heat. I think we've done some work with air handling units in that part of the building that's improved things, in the band room that replaced the valve, that improved things. We are still looking for, at cost estimates, for putting additional heat in both the band room and the woodworking classroom, if you will, and we're also looking at, in the band room, possibly putting some ceiling fans in, because it's a high-ceiling room that it could benefit from pushing the warm air down. I did ask Bob French, the head custodian, to take a look at replacement of the baseboards. You may recall, he commented about that, and he did his best to correct the problems related to that by using foam insulation and other insulation, but it still is away from the wall, even though, and so I said, let's take a look at that and see if there's an even better way to do that by replacing the baseboards. His concern that he's going to explore is that the baseboards were put in first, and then the radiators put in front of it, so it might be a very expensive fix of, you know, pulling out your whole heating system just to replace a baseboard. So, we'll find out, and we'll see. But anyway, the work that he had done, just to put in the foam insulation, really did make an improvement. So, that's where we are with fire and life safety kinds of things. The Oyster River Tuition Agreement, last meeting, I believe it was you, Kelly, had asked, Jim, can you put together a chronology of all that's transpired from beginning to end for the development of a possible tuition agreement with Oyster River? And I did put it together. It's pretty lengthy. Thankfully, I had a lot of good notes, and I have a good calendar that captures a lot of things, so I pretty much have got everything in here, I believe, going back to July 14, 2010, and then shows when that effort in 2010 came to an end, and then beginning again in March of 2012, and then following that all the way up to where we are today. And as you can see, there's been pretty steady progress, maybe not evident to a lot of people, but a lot of steady progress and attention paid to this option for our possible education of our high school kids, so. But it's brought up to date, to the point of me saying there's a meeting on March 25th. Okay, so we will be meeting in Oyster River, and Cliff, imagine you and Meg, we'll continue with that, and hopefully, we will make some headway with that. As the previous meeting, we began looking at a draft tuition agreement. We're trying to do some things in between. I'm still trying to schedule a meeting with their principal and superintendent between now and the 25th, and the purpose is to take a look at the staffing analysis that our principals... principals did, and see if we can come to agreement on what additional staff, excuse me, what additional staff would be required if our students did go to Oyster River, and because we need to know that number before we know what their operating cost will be, and then we can build a tuition based on that. So hopefully, we'll have that meeting before the 25th, but I don't have a date for that just yet, so. That's all I have. Do you have any questions on anything in that?
I want to thank you for doing it. I think it's wonderful. I think it visually represents that our action, or your action on this Oyster River tuition agreement has been more than tepid, and I think from March 12, March 2012 on, there's something, even multiple things, done every month. So it's something that has been acted upon at least once a month, or sometimes twice a month or something, so it's not something that we're just letting drag. I would say, I think it would be helpful if we could post this somehow on the website. And I know it's an ongoing, living document, so maybe at the end of every month or every other month, you could add the new things that you've done and kind of just refresh it as we go, so that we can be more visible to the community to show them what we are doing, because it is an important option that a lot of people have interest in, and if they don't get to watch the meetings, or they don't get to read the minutes, at least they get to go there and see. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
That's a good idea, I'll do that.
May I be back on that?
Absolutely.
Because I really agree with Kelly. I think this information is exactly what the community needs. I don't think people out there know that there have been 26 engagements with Oyster River, whether they were formally, based on your timeline here, that's a significant amount of effort that has gone into moving us forward and exploring that direction. I think it's exactly the information that we're looking for, and I think to go one step further than the website, now, there is going to laugh at me, but I really think we underutilize our Channel 13. If we could do, I don't know what else to call it, but like an infomercial on Dr. Hayes is going to be talking for like five minutes about the Oyster River, I don't know, just that not everybody has email.
All I want to say is I'm working on that.
Okay. I know we've talked about it, but I missed.
And I finally committed, I'm going to do that.
And we can help, like, yes, still, just that, just the different mediums of communication.
I agree.
And I have a couple other things to say, but I don't want to hug that. Is it okay?
If you pull your microphone forward.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And this just goes along the communication theme, because after Candidates Night, and reflecting on that, some of the dialogue there, I really feel that the more proactive we can be with the facts, it will really diffuse the divisive comments, opinions, misfacts that people present, particularly to new candidates that may not be well-versed in what's going on, particularly at the school board level if they're running for town council. You know, for example, like, teachers don't work full-time, or teachers don't get paid a lot. Instead of responding, "Oh, yes, they do," we could say, you know, politely, "Well, thank you for your opinion, we disagree, and here are the facts, why." And we've done a lot of that before, like, we've done an analysis of teacher pay around the area, so really, just getting that information continually out there, I think, is really important, because if we're truly committed to bringing the community together, then instead of responding in emotion, which I wanted to do at Candidates Night, but refrained from doing, really reflecting on what are the facts and how can we get those to the community. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't know if there's a way, too. I mean, I know we have our own website, but in an effort to try and work with the town, I mean, I know they have a calendar, and they have things. I don't know if there's a way to, like, post some of our information. I mean, it seems silly to have duplicate information, but I think it's important when we have dates for forums and stuff that might be coming down the pike, that we need to utilize every medium that we have to get that information out to people.
Thank you.
We were just discussing, a couple days ago, about ways to have more cross-links from the town website and the school website, those types of things. Chad, anything you'd like to add down there?
They've said it all.
I just would like to, just commenting on the timeline that you've prepared so thoroughly, it goes prior to that. I can recall going to meetings with interim superintendents even predating that, and I want to keep in, you know, remind folks of the support for a warrant article, non-binding, a couple years ago regarding exploring a cooperative-natured, you know, solution to our school facilities problem, and that we did, understanding that comments that are made by different communities can get stale, some of the information that I took away from the Candidates Night that was discussed, that, you know, we need to have conversations with neighboring school districts, we've done that, and we've actually done that more than once. But it's not something that we talk about a lot, therefore, people forget or lose track, or never knew in the first place that we had made overtures to all of our neighbors regarding their level of interest, and...
I'll add that before I post it, so I can get that.
Yeah.
Great.
It's a good idea. Thank you.
And you just made me think, you know, every year, new people come to town, or become involved, or become aware, and so there's a re-education, year after year, sometimes month after month, and, you know, it's really, it's, sometimes it can be kind of frustrating because, you know, you feel like you're starting over again, but, you know, in the long run, it's really a great thing, because it means that just more and more people are aware and care and are becoming involved. So it's great to see a lot of different, like, grassroots groups kind of popping up through town, because I really, you know, I always say, "We need a neighborhood, you know, we need neighborhood champions. Every street in this town needs to have a champion that goes to all the meetings, or at least watches the meetings, and is aware, so that they can spread the word to their neighborhood." And, you know, hopefully, that's going to just keep happening, and pretty soon, every darned person in this town's going to know.
They'll know more than they want to know. I mean, I think I would say, I think the Newmarket Solutions Group has done a good job at trying to start that, and for people that are new to the issue, they have a lot of historical documents that they posted on there that have a history that I think can help people. If you just go there and read, you can kind of bring yourself up to speed, to a certain extent. I mean, there's nothing like talking to people to get the real information, but I agree. I think you're right. I think they're doing, you know, we're doing the best we can, and I think there are some real important individuals in this town that are really trying to get that out there. So I agree.
But yeah, we need to be very aggressive with our communication, which is a big takeaway from our last meeting.
Yeah.
There's never enough. Final thoughts on the facilities report? Okay, let's move on to program. Christine, you have a five-year projection of our operating budget.
I do. I have a PowerPoint presentation, so I'd like to have it out here. Good evening, everybody. So this is the Newmarket School District, and what I was asked to do was to come up with a five-year operating budget forecast. So what I'm going to show you tonight is just clearly operating budget. It does not factor in any capital projects. I'll talk a little bit about New Hampshire Retirement in just a minute, but there's no New Hampshire Retirement costs factored in, as well as tuition agreements or anything like that, so I just want to make sure we're clear. Tax rate comparison, as I started the process, I just thought this was interesting. So I like charts, because it gives me a visual, so you can kind of see where we started in 2000, where we are today in 2013, so this is the tax rate. So you can see in 2000, we were spiked, we came down, and now we're kind of coming back up, and we're going to be leveling off, and I'll show you the history with that. Okay, my executive summary. So FY13, okay, it's right here. This is our current operating budget. This is the estimated tax rate right now for just the school, okay, and this is both the state and the local combined. FY14, we've all seen this, this, there's, and I'll speak a little bit more in just a minute, this number right here has some assumptions that are involved in that, for example, collective bargaining, okay? So that's the proposed FY14 budget. The percent increase is 2.5, the estimated tax rate, as you can see, is 1651. And then we have projected FY15, 16, 17, and 18. So you can kind of see the corresponding percentage increases in the estimated tax rate. So you can kind of see that we're going up 2.5, the 1.5, the 2.3, and 0.6. The reason why you're going to see, oh, let me just back up for a second. One more. Little pointer, okay. The main difference, these are pretty much leveling off, because we have a proposed warrant article for a collective bargaining agreement, which will end in this year. So we left everything from here going forward for personnel and staffing, status quo for the FY16, okay? So we didn't factor any cost of livings or anything like that for the next two years, so that's the change why these are a little bit lower. We can't project that far out what's going to happen with a new future agreement. So here's my assumptions. Supplies, so that's all supplies for all functions, okay? It's 2%. Repairs and maintenance, it's 2%. Fuel oil, 2%, dental insurance, 2%. These are about the averages of what we're seeing. Property liability, unemployment, insurance is 5%. We're seeing big spikes, especially in unemployment compensation, because some of the things that come out with President Obama, extending unemployment compensation, the number of people who are currently unemployed, and so forth. Workers' compensation, 3%. Electricity, 5%. Very interesting. This electricity right now is a wild card for us. Reason being, I don't know if you've seen the newspapers, is that our supplier, PNE, just recently went bankrupt. So we are currently, just so you know, we're currently back on PSNH rates as of February 28th, and I'm sure you've heard that PSNH rates are up 24%. So you can see that that's going to be a wild card for us, because right now, we don't have that in the budget. So we are quickly working with the town. You'll see, excuse me, you'll see a bid going out for electricity, because we're going to try to get into a new contract with another vendor. So that's kind of going to be real interesting to see how this plays out. I think 5%, the reason why I went with that is because I think that we'll be okay, based on what the town's paying. So if we can get something comparable, if not better, working together, then we'll be in a good situation, so. Health insurance, 5%. And teachers agreement, the collective bargaining agreement, which is on the warrant article, I assumed that that gets passed, okay, for this five-year projection. The reason why I did that is because of this. Health insurance. School care is the proposed plan, which is this blue line right here, okay? This is connected to the teachers' contract. If the teachers' contract passes, we would have a health care change to school care, okay? If the teachers' contract does not pass, the monies that's currently in the operating budget would go to pay our current provider, which is New Hampshire Intalocal Trusts, also abbreviated as NHIT, okay? That's a big factor in this process, because as you can see, the difference here, okay, is about a 3% or about $450,000 difference projected out, you can see. Do we want to be here, or would we prefer to be here? Okay, so depending on how that plays out, you're going to see a difference. New Hampshire Retirement, like I said, it comes, the rates come out every two years, so we already know what the 14, 15, and the 13, 14 to 14, 15 rate is, which is up about 25%. Interesting enough, you can see, we started for the district share very low at 3.7. It's hard to believe that we started there, and we're down here at 14.6. So we've come, the district has had a tremendous burden from New Hampshire Retirement alone. The numbers that we had, that we were faced with in the current proposed FY14 budget was over, sorry about that, was about over $200,000. So you can see that that is a big factor when we're trying to present a projection or a forecast. So this is just a chart, so that you can kind of see what it looks like. The district is in blue, the state share is in red, oops, sorry, we won't go there yet. So you can kind of see that, very little down here, you can see that there's no participation at all, and so now, it's pretty much the district bears the expense. So after the 2014, 15 year, we don't know what's going to happen with New Hampshire Retirement. I can't even begin to try to predict what that's going to look like. So that will be, and interesting to see how that plays out. But that's pretty much all I have. I will back up, so if anybody has any questions to the executive summary, just so you can see it, so if you do have questions, I'd be happy to answer it, so.
What was the increase in our fuel oil budgeted amount from our current fiscal year to our proposed budget?
What I budgeted in here? I did 5%. Are you asking me the dollar amount?
The percent change from, I guess, from the last couple of years, we've seen growth, because certainly since around '08, the fuel oil price has gone up tremendously. Seems to me more than 2%.
Yeah, there, it's averaging, we're averaging close to 5%. And that's why, this current FY14 budget, we proposed the 5%, because that's about the average of what it's increased. We've also had, I mean, in terms of the dollars, it's about 5%, but in terms of our volume, we're burning more gallons right now than you were last year. We're burning about 200 gallons in the high school alone a day. So if you, if you're asking for just, for comparable to dollar to dollar, it's about a 5% increase in terms of what we're budgeting. We budgeted this year, we're locked in at 3.30 a gallon, so I budgeted 5% of that going forward.
So then why did you only use 2%?
Oh, sorry, 2%. I was looking at 5%, so it's 2%, sorry. Using the wrong percentage. Thank you.
Oh, you're thinking electricity?
Yes, I looked down, electricity, sorry.
And Christine, are your assumptions based on, like, past data or just?
Past data, past history here. Yep.
If the repairs have made the building, if we're about to set this whole, we just take the full, like, not the big things?
Not catastrophic emergencies, correct, yeah.
Like everyday kind of?
Right, we just, you know, you kind of just want, again, it's just kind of like a bookmark, I can't determine if something, if our boiler breaks, obviously, that's going to be a huge factor, but that's your just typical everyday, wear and tear, maintenance, supplies. Same thing with supplies, it's supplies for just the school system, because, you know, cost of goods are going up, because the fuel prices are going up, so we're trying to anticipate some type of inflation, you know, in here, so that's what I'm expecting for.
Christine, did you work with the town finance director at all to maybe do a little bit of preparations with what, you know, with his?
Matt Angel and I?
Yeah.
Yep, Matt Angel and I did sit down, we worked together. He is projecting a 2.7 inflation. That's what he's using, a straight 2.7 inflation, so.
Christine, you have down there, in terms of salaries, you have Newmarket Teachers' Agreement. Would you comment a little bit about people who are not in that bargaining unit, but, you know, like, individual contracts or class? you know, like individual contracts or classified staff, how you handle that?
Correct. What I do is I kept the same assumptions. So for, we have a support staff, that we kept that at a 1% increase for the first three years. We kept it inconsistent with the teachers' contract, so the teachers' contract is three years. So we kept the support staff at a 1%, 1% for every three, for the three years. And we also have a negotiations line for all professional certified employees. And so we kept that status quo for three years. And at the end of the three years, we kept everybody status quo because we don't know what's gonna happen after that. So the last two years, FY17 and '18 are just straight. So that's what you'll see. Right here, the contract ends. So we'd be negotiating for a new, new teachers' contract. So everybody is status quo for FY17 and FY18.
Would it make more sense to maybe take a look at some of our past, you know, like the past contracts and things to, to kind of get an average to use for '17 and '18 instead of keeping it status quo? Because, you know, chances are good that, you know, eight, that, that a contract will be put forward and could very well pass and...
I, I hear what you're saying. The reason why I felt that I didn't do that, because a lot of things are going to change, as you know, in New Market. So we could be faced with a building project, we could be faced with a tuition, we could be faced with a lot of variables. So I didn't want to start factoring in anything for those last two years. So that's why I felt that leaving it status quo, because then I don't have New Hampshire retirement in there as well. So there's a lot of pieces of the last two years. But I felt that, and this is also just so that it's clear, that I kept all the revenues, you know, status quo as well, so, because that is another piece of the puzzle. But that's why I left it as status quo, because I feel that it's really hard for me to predict looking at past history because the economies change, there's, there'd be inflation. So that's why I didn't do it. Because I think this is a true representat- representation of where we're going in, you know, without factoring in some of those pieces. But I can do it if you...
Well, I, I mean, I'm curious, so, I mean, so the town, we have a five-year plan for them, and I'm wondering, you know, how, how did, how did they handle that? How did they?
They went a straight, my understanding is they went a straight 2 and a half, 2.7%.
Every year?
Yep.
So it would be reasonable to think that FY17, '18, that if, in my mind, I see those as essentially a minimum. It would likely be, if we do nothing to change how we do business, it would be at least that.
Correct.
If you could, I mean, if you wanted to, you could put and create a second model that just plugs in a 1% increase, for example.
Absolutely. If you want to see what, if you, I can plug anything in there. I mean, that's, that's not an issue. I can do, if you say, do a 2%, you know?
I, I mean, I just think it would be a good idea because, I mean, the, the reality is, this is a, you know, this is a, it's a forecast anyway, it's not a set in stone, you know, it's, you know, kind of a best guess, a crystal ball kind of. So, you know, and if, and if the town felt comfortable going with a 2.7, you know, maybe that's what you should do for those last two years as well. You know, the '14, '15, and '16, you know, those are fairly, you know, those are numbers that you can kind of hang a hat on. But those last two, to me, you know, are not terribly realistic. So, you know, I, I think that, yeah, I, I personally would like to see at least, you know, at least a 2% for the two years. But maybe use the 2.7 if that's what the town is using.
Okay.
You know, also, you gave us this great comparison of...
The tax rate?
...retirement system and how their contributions have gradually gone down, maybe not even so gradually. But is there, I don't know, for some reason it would be helpful for me to see our revenues in that way too, because I have a feeling that there's, that is...
The... Just to give you an idea, for an example, let me see if I, so you see, where did I put it? Okay. Okay, so you see here, this is why this is so high?
Yeah.
Have you all heard of the Claremont decision?
Yeah.
Okay. So the Claremont decision came out, and then that's how the whole adequacy education grant came out, okay? So in here, you had funding from the adequacy education, which was about 30, 35%. Today, you're down to 15%. Okay, so that's just to give you an example of how the revenues are declining from the state. So I can do, I can come back when I, I can re-present this, and I can do a 2% in there, and I can come back and show some of the revenues if you'd like.
It just kind of gives you that whole, like, whole, like, whole world picture or whatever.
Correct. I can just show it. I didn't present it because I couldn't even begin to tell you even next year when we start doing, you know, what's gonna happen. So that's why I didn't factor it in.
If you just like this historical one that you have here from New Hampshire Retirement.
Yep, I can give you one.
It would be nice to see that.
Sure, absolutely. Any other?
This is great, so, forward. Good information. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me turn the light, yeah. Thanks.
Stand up. They're pointing at it.
Got it, got it.
Good job, Christine.
Yes.
We're now all a little closer to our microphones. Any other thoughts or questions on the presentation?
Just good suggestions, and I think we'll go back, we'll revise it and bring it back to you, look at it again till you're happy with the kind of model that we've done, so.
Thank you.
Good things to think about, certainly. Okay, we have in our packets the department head job description and evaluation model. Jim, do you want to walk us through that?
I'll comment a bit. It's a, we always start with the job description, and it's something that I take, what did we have as existing language? We didn't have a whole lot. And then I, I do a survey of what kinds of job descriptions are out there, what I think really represents what we want our, our assistant principals to do. And then, once I captured that, I shared it with the principals and assistant principals and said, "Okay, review this and tell me what you think and make modifications." And, and they did that. And then they worked with the department head, department heads, all of them, and got feedback from all of them. And, and so then, once we refine that, then we turn it into this summative evaluation form. The summative, as I mentioned in my notes, has gone to the, the four levels of identifying performance assessment. And so I think that's more in line where you were hoping things would go. The only thing that's, that's a bit of a hitch here, what, what I, what I did not, I did not do and still needs to be done, is working with the teachers' association. Because department heads are members of the teaching, teachers' association as teachers, the job department head is not part of their, their agreement. But department heads do have a role in working with teachers, in doing observations, in supervising teachers, in running meetings and so forth. And so there's a, there's an area where we need to tread very carefully. And I, and I think, I think it was handled extremely well, must be three years ago now, when we, when we put together the teacher evaluation model. Because what we wanted in that model was for department heads to be able to work with teachers to improve instruction. And yet, because they're members of the same bargaining unit, you didn't want it to be so evaluative. But I think we really crafted an agreement that allowed, as a department head, meeting, if I were a department head, to go into classrooms and, and observe teaching and, and then give teachers constructive feedback. So that, that, and that's working very well. But what I didn't do, and, and what I did is I used the language that came out of that teacher evaluation model. So I really thought, okay, I've covered the base. But, but what I should have done, and is still in process, is to have the teachers' Association take a look at this and just be sure that, that I handled it right.
Represented it right.
If you have any issues, then so be it. So we can do one of two things. If you're, if you're comfortable with it as is, because I think we are in alignment with that, you could approve it pending that review. And if there's a problem with the review, then I can bring it back. Or you can just, you know, table it until the review's done and, and bring it back again. So whatever your pleasure is.
Any thoughts?
Well, I had a couple questions, just, and I think it's just clarifying language for myself. On the second page, under, it's number 21, it, it speaks to this issue you're talking about, does an informal observation with each new teacher? And I was just, wanted for my own knowledge, what is a new teacher, what qualifies as a new teacher? Someone that's brand new, or is it someone that's non-tenured, or is that someone? How long does that go? Like, I just wanted to know, do they, are they only responsible for those new teachers?
I, I believe that that's first year, first year with us.
Okay.
I don't think it's meant to mean...
First year in the district.
First year in the district. I don't think that's meant to mean all, for all of their years of non-tenure.
Okay, I wasn't, yeah, I just wasn't sure. And then my next question was to that one, asking if that was in accordance with the teachers' contract, so.
Yeah, the language came right out of it.
Right, so. And then my other question, just in general, is, I know as a department head, there's a certain, they're allowed out of other duties, or, I shouldn't say it that way, but what is it, what's the, because they have to be allowed time to do, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that they're doing here. So what is the toss-up? Do you remember what that is? Can't remember? I should probably know myself.
I can't remember whether they, they teach a full load and don't have a duty, or whether they teach one less class, but I think it's full load and no duty.
I don't remember.
I don't, honestly, I don't recall.
But there is, I mean, it is taken into account that, I mean, they're doing their teaching, plus they're doing this. So they are allowed some kind of extra time, if there is such a thing in a teacher world. Okay, I was just curious about that.
I can, I'll check and find out.
Anyone else?
The other thing that I would maybe suggest is an overall rating. There's no overall?
I did do that.
Is there?
Overall, at the last page. Do you have the last page with the signature line?
Yes.
Ah, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't turn my page over.
It's okay.
How many?
I think you should kick me off the board for that.
How many department heads are there? Is there just one for, is it math, English, social studies? Is it the basics, or is, there's like a lang, is there a world language? Sorry, I'm asking you questions.
You're asking me questions, there's, well, there's math, English, social studies, science, world languages. There was a time when we had like a unified arts, but then we've broken that up, I believe. So we have, I think it's the arts, and then...
There's a separate?
There's a wellness.
Okay, so like six, seven?
I think about seven, I believe.
All right.
Do those roles, they, they don't really have analogues in the middle school so much, or the elementary?
Yeah, they don't, really.
Chad, I know you've got a lot of passion about being a, the department head roles and...
This looks good.
From personal experience and all.
This looks good.
Yeah, it's pretty thorough.
Well, cover it.
It's a lot of work.
What is the pleasure of the group regarding, do we want to give the opportunity prior to taking action? Because this is something that we should formally adopt. Do we want to wait for conversation with the folks with the union? Or do we want to approve it conditionally?
I'm okay with approving it conditionally. I mean, I'm definitely willing to bring it back to the table if there are things that we need to revisit. The union finds things that aren't acceptable in here.
I don't think there's any reason to... Well, or even, it's not like this is holding up something if we don't do it tonight, right? I mean, I don't think it's stopping you from moving ahead if you don't get our approval of it tonight. Or is it, maybe it is?
No, it's not. No, I mean, you could easily, you know, table it and wait and see.
It doesn't really matter.
I might put something in here about defining what the teaching role is, and so it's greater clarity all in one job description, but, no. It's really, the really important piece is by the end of the year, so that we can properly evaluate these people and give them good constructive feedback, so.
But can, I, I mean, can you clarify again, though? This, this is not a position that's covered under the collective bargaining agreement?
The collective bargaining, no, it's not. But they are members of the collective bargaining agreement. And there's that, you know, really, to be evaluated by someone, they, you should not be evaluated by somebody within the same bargaining unit. That's the real crux of the, the issue that we had to try and maneuver around when we did that evaluation system. And so the, the compromise was to have the department head visit the classrooms, observe teachers, maybe take notes if they need to, but, but then have, and have a good follow-up conversation with the teacher about what they saw and what may need improvement. But it doesn't go into a written report. So it doesn't become part of the formal evaluation process. And yet, we still have, you know, somebody in world languages who really understands how to teach world languages can go to a classroom and, and, and give, I think, more constructive feedback. So, so it was that collegial relationship without being part of the formal evaluation system.
And this is consistent with current practice?
Yes, yeah.
Are the department heads, under this model, allowed to share their observations with the administration?
Generally, no.
There isn't?
Generally, they don't. If there's a, you know, there's a problem that they need to be made aware of, then yes. But again, not in writing.
But not in like a formal way?
Not in writing, but something verbally, yes. But by and large, no. Much more mentoring kind of situation.
Well, I don't, I don't care one way or the other, I mean...
I don't either. If you're feeling that, I don't mind deferring to Kelly's.
I just felt like if it was something that he needed to help move him forward on something, then we should do it tonight. But if it's not, then it...
It's not something really pressing for me. If you want to wait, then I'm fine with that. That's no issue. It's really more for spring, you know, when we get into April, May, I want to be able to use the evaluation.
So then we'll call this a first read, then, I suppose?
Yeah, sure.
I don't expect any problems, but it...
No.
I just follow that. Okay. Next on the program is the renewal of the contract for the superintendent. Hard to believe, you know, as time goes by awfully quickly.
I know.
So I think we all have copies of the proposed contract. I guess I'd just like to highlight a couple things, which is primarily, this is the same language as the prior contract. And it is for, for the next three years. And the salary that's listed here is the salary that has been brought up openly and discussed through the whole budgeting process. And we've, as a group, discussed it and disclosure to the community in, in non-public session. And so, so here it is. Does anyone want to make any comments or a motion to approve this contract? I think it's, I guess I'll take an opportunity... I think it's, I guess I'll take an opportunity to thank our superintendent. He's brought a lot of knowledge and experience to our school district, both from, certainly facilities has been the front burner issue that the community sees a lot of, but there's been so much with using like the evaluation model that we were just discussing earlier. We've already gone through several others from Director of Curriculum and Instruction and principal roles, and the list goes on and on. Policy manual, procedures...
Handbooks.
Right, which has, really will make the job a lot easier moving forward because things are well documented in an organized way, which has really brought us, I think, to a new level of consistency and best practice. So I want to thank you publicly for carrying the torch for us in those many ways beyond what some might see in the community as just a singular role, as an advocate for resolving our facilities' problems. I see it much more than that personally, and trying to drive the aggressive message of, you know, what we're here for. It's not just, it's not just curriculum, it's not just employer-related things, it's not just facilities, it's the whole package. And I'm very happy we have you here to perform those roles so well as you do. That's my, that's my speech, I'm sticking with it.
I will just add that something else that people may not know or understand in the community is this is not a Monday through Friday, nine-to-five job for Dr. Hayes. He sends emails all weekend long, all night long. I don't quite know when he sleeps.
During the Super Bowl, I got an email.
Yeah, you know, it's a kind of a 24/7 kind of thing. I'm sorry to his wife. And the level of professionalism is incredible. His, it's, in everything that he's touched, I mean, from the, putting the budget together in a more meaningful way, and the presentation of the budget, everything that you've touched has just been polished, refined, and professional. And I, it's just been such a thrill to work with you. And I'm certainly, you know, I'm leaving the board, but I am certainly looking forward to other opportunities to work with you over the next three years.
Geez, you guys have said it all. I would just add that I think, you know, you worked tirelessly on things that are not always easy and not easy to, you're not always perceived very well in the public. And I truly feel that, you know, you remain steadfast in your desire to do what's best for kids and the community, and that kind of keeps you on your target. And I do thank his wife for allowing us all of this time. And I think you've just made us more efficient in the way that we do things, and the way that we, even the way that we get our agendas, they're not mailed to us anymore. They're like, you know, I mean, just, and it's hard because people don't see all of that, that we got to see over these last three years. But I just really appreciate everything that you've done so far, and I look forward to three more years at least.
Really, but I have to add something I can't not. I think as you go through the ranks and you get higher and higher in administration, your popularity pulls, unfortunately, plunge. So it's a really tough position to be in, and I think you've done it with grace and intelligence. And I look forward to the next three years because we have a lot of tough decisions to make. We have a lot of hard work to do, and I look forward to your leadership. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, Jim, things are so well-defined since you've been here. People should know where they're going, and we do have some issues that are going to have to be dealt with in this community. I think you're going to help. Thank you.
So with that, would anyone like to offer a motion?
We might have to do that.
To...
It's like, I'm not making a comment until you... I would like to gladly make a motion to accept the, what would I say, the superintendent agreement. Do I have to give the years that it's for, or as written?
I think that's...
The Professional Employees Administrative Agreement between the School District and Dr. Hayes.
I'll second.
Further comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
If I can now. I don't want to make all of my comments, but first of all, to thank you for a contract for another three years. This job has been everything that I had hoped it would be. I love my job, and I don't mind the long hours that it takes to get it done, because it just is, just a work that I love. And so I look forward to the next three years. You're right, we have some very big decisions to be made, and hopefully we'll, I can do my part to guide us to those decisions, and we come up with the right one, hopefully, whatever that is. But it is, as somebody who has worked with school boards and school committees for a lot of years, this group has been the best, and I hope that the new additions keep that tradition going of having our heads in the right place and our hearts in the right place. So it's a pleasure working with all of you, so that makes the job a lot easier.
Well, thank you.
Thanks. So don't let me leave this evening before we do some signatures. Correspondence. We have, the Town and School District Report has been published.
Yes, this year we decided to combine, rather than do separate reports. The primary motive was to try and save money, and we were definitely able to do that. And yet I think the finished product came out very nice. Folks know that, should know that they are available, both in the School District, the SAU office here in Town Hall, also down in the Town offices, and if they haven't already picked one up, they should do that. It is a comprehensive report for both the Town and the schools. Very pleased with it. So do all of you have a copy?
Yeah, I do.
Yes, I have a copy.
Right, because I brought extras.
Okay. And is that available electronically as well?
It's not yet. I asked the Town Administrator about that, and we have to wait for an electronic copy from the printer.
Printer?
It hasn't come in yet. As soon as it is, we will put it online.
Okay.
On both sites.
Excellent. Any comments or questions about that piece? Okay. We've had a little business report already, so nothing more at this point. We've got a couple first reads for policy. Summer activities and assignment of students to classes.
The summer activities one is a pretty straightforward new policy that, the essence of it really is to make a statement as a board that we encourage students, families, to look at the summer period as a time to extend their learning in a variety of ways, whatever. And I think hopefully then as a district, we encourage that as well with enrichment programs, or providing information to families about camps, encouraging reading throughout the summer, and things of that sort. So that's what that policy seeks to do, and really not a lot more.
And we have assignment of students to classes and grade levels?
Yep, and that is really just one that puts into words what we already do, but I think really solidifies the decision-making process of who gets to decide ultimately where students are placed. You know, that parents and students can work with the school administration, both at the elementary school, it's usually a classroom assignment, but at the high school, it's all course assignments, so it does look different. It is a process that takes place every spring, and there's communication between the home and the administration about that, although it's not fully spelled out in here. If there's a, if there's a, if there's a conflict, if there's a real strong objection, and they're not happy with the principal's decision, then obviously there's a chain-of-command process that, once they're done at that level, they can come to my level, ultimately they can come to the board. But that's stated in here without stating any more of the process.
Any questions on either of those proposed policies? Okay. Got some second reads as well.
First is volunteers, policy IJOC. And again, as usual, everything you see in bold is new language added to the current language, so it's a revision. Recently, Kelly and I had kicked back some comments that she had made, and so made a slight change to, on the first page, right underneath where it says voluntary applications and selection. One seems more grammatical. Persons wishing to volunteer, not at, but for, is a word we would change. And then the second sentence in that paragraph, such forms will be made available at, it says the principal's office, we'll just say each school's main office, more appropriate. I'm not sure if there's anything else in there, Kelly, you wanted to talk about. I know I answered your questions, but...
Yeah, no, I just had, I initially had some questions about, you know, there's a definite, what do I want to say? They're trying to distinguish between designated volunteers and regular volunteers that come into school, and I was just curious, well, what was an example of like a regular volunteer? And, you know, he explained that it really would mean like at 500 students, that they do have interaction with students, but they don't, what was it? They don't...
Yeah, it's really not an extensive period of time.
No.
And they're always under the supervision of the teacher who's there.
Yeah. So I just wanted some clarification about what that distinction was. But yeah, everything else is totally, looks good to me.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve policy IJOC as presented.
I'll second.
It's your last time, I thought you...
He's got a couple more.
He's got a couple more he can do.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five-zero.
The next policy is related to that. It's policy IJOC-R. And it's really a revamping of what had been current policy, and it's taking out a lot of information that can be otherwise conveyed to the volunteers, not necessarily through policy. And in its place puts the confidentiality agreement that we want all volunteers to be signing.
I'll make a motion to accept policy IJOC-R.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Jim, where does the, this other language about conduct and cancellations and things like that, does that appear in an employee sort of manual, a volunteer manual, some sort of...
No, but what I'll do is create like a, when they first start as volunteers, create a sheet that we make sure that it's given to them, and it may be at the time that they come to do their quarry. That's probably the best time to do that. So we'll just have a process, so they understand our expectations.
I like the idea of separating the purposes apart, you know, where this, the confidentiality piece is important, and it comes through loud and clear if that's the subject of the document.
Especially good you have that in policy.
Right.
Because that can be a real conflict.
Any other thoughts? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five-zero.
Next policy is a revision as well. It's a policy GBCD, on background investigation and criminal records check. And just a couple paragraphs that have been inserted in there. One is relative to volunteers and their criminal records checks, and then the other is just putting clearly into words that the superintendent will develop a background investigation protocol to be used in this process and keep, maintain written records of all of these. It's something, and I've explained this to you before, it's something we already do. We already maintain those records.
I make a motion to accept policy GBCD, background investigation and criminal records check.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
If I can, I neglected to mention something I think is really important on the second page. And that is, in the past, it's been, language has been purely for convictions. But now it allows for charges pending as well, which I think is a really good, positive step.
Hearing no other thoughts, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries again unanimously.
The next is a new policy, policy GEA, which deals with athletic team coaches. It puts into words what we actually do, but it refers to things like the selection process, coaches' eligibility, and the age at which people can coach, compensation, how that's determined, whether it's a continuing contract or year-to-year, and how dismissal takes place. I'll comment there about code of ethics. Couple things that, again, as Kelly and I kicked this around, that for greater clarity, under the continuation and dismissal language, the last sentence read, "The recommendation for reappointment will be made by the superintendent." And actually, that makes it sound like I'm recommending to someone, I'm really not. It's reappointment. You may recall a year, I think it was a year or so ago, you gave me that authority to simply handle the hiring of coaches. And so any reappointment of coaches would be made by the superintendent. The second is a whole new paragraph that gets added in here. As I mentioned before, we are working on a coaches handbook. I've begun reviewing it, but it's pretty lengthy, so it's going to take me a while. But I put a reference in this policy that says this, it's a new paragraph, "Coaches' Handbook." "Coaches will be given a copy of the coaches' handbook, which shall outline the elements of this policy and expectations for job performance and conduct of the program."
So with that, you would like to add that language?
Yes, to be part of this policy. And I didn't print those up for you, so...
Did you catch that, Jen?
Sure.
You will.
She will, in red.
And...
Please.
I will make a motion to approve policy GEA as presented and slightly amended.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
I had asked about the coaches' eligibility criteria. Did you get any response about that?
Yes. And the athletic director, she wouldn't recommend putting more specific language in there, but NHIA publishes eligibility criteria for coaching. And depending upon the positions and timing, it changes. It sounds like it changes somewhat frequently. So that's why she left it there. It is available on the NHIA website, I'm told by her, and so whenever we hire someone, we refer to that, we use that as criteria as we assess candidates.
Okay. I just noticed that there should be a period at the end of the coaches' eligibility, eligibility paragraph.
Yeah, I see that.
Just for grammar sense.
Yep.
Okay, I'll take that as a friendly change. I'm not hearing any other comments, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously again.
And the last policy for a second... And the last policy for a second reading is a new policy. It's one sentence. "The school district will meet the special physical health needs of students consistent with state and federal law." And it's required by DOE. And so, it's called the policy JLCK, Special Physical Health Needs of Students.
Which we've already been doing, but now it's just written down.
We already do. We comply, we just need a policy that ensures that.
I'll make a motion to accept policy JLCK, special, special, special physical health needs of students.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion on this highly controversial policy? Highly common sense? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Okay. We have a manifest? Or, sorry, do we have any resignations or other leave requests?
None, no.
Don't want to make any assumptions there. We have a manifest?
We do. "I would like to make a motion to accept the total of all manifests in the amount of
And I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have an enrollment report. Looks like the, the typical ups and downs. Is there anything?
Nothing unusual there, no.
Note there?
Pretty steady.
Anyone have any questions? Okay. Onto calendar, Linda, would you like to talk anything about project graduation bingo?
Last chance.
Everybody go. Oh, that's the same day as the, um, penny sale, right?
It's the penny sale, yeah. So it's going to be a busy.
Two whole day, all the day in the cafeteria.
Yep.
Nice. Very nice.
Emma, do you know about the student council pick-up pie? What is that?
See, I, I was under the impression that it wasn't happening anymore.
Oh, maybe not.
Yeah. So I, that's what I thought I heard at the meeting. I'm wrong. I will let you guys know.
I just didn't know, what, what is it? Have we had it before or is this like a new thing?
I think they had done it last year and it didn't do too well.
Oh, okay. Put a question mark on that one.
I'll find out.
Sounds great.
There's nothing wrong with pie. My favorite food. Voting Day.
Yes.
Most important to identify, uh, this coming Tuesday, the 12th, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, here in the basement, uh, Town Hall. We need at least a quorum of school board members to come and, um, sign the warrant. And who knows, um, what help might be required of counting write-ins and that sort of thing. So, we'll make a point to be there and I hope everyone who's, um, paying attention tonight also comes in as part of democracy.
Yes.
And then the next school board meeting, the, um, organizational meeting will be on the 21st, later this month. And, um, I'm ahead some highlights earlier, so I think, anything else anyone needs to add?
Looks good.
Okay. We do have neat reason for non-public session this evening?
Yes, we do.
It will be under RSA 91A, colon, 3, room number 2, paragraph A. Dismissal promotion and compensation of any public employee. Entertain a motion regarding that?
So moved.
Second.
Let Linda do it. It's her last one.
Thanks, Kelly.
Roll call. Cliff Chase?
Aye.
Meg Looney-Moore?
Aye.
Kelly Foster?
Aye.
Chet Jablonsky? Linda Muntzky?
Aye.
See you at 835.